I'd like to call this meeting to order and I welcome everyone. I'd like to acknowledge that the municipality of Central Elgin acknowledged that we are gathered on the land of the McKee Purchase, the traditional territory of the Hodnisoni, Atawandran, and Mississauga Nation. Does any member of council have a disclosure of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. I know that councillor Fair is absent today. He is away. Motion on the minutes, please, Mrs. Wilson.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor. Moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Rowe, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, February the 28th, 2020 should be adopted.
Any questions? Seeing none, and we're all present. I don't see Karen on yet, so we'll go by show of hands. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. You know, if Karen gets tuned in here soon or whatever, we'll, we'll have to change, but till then. And now I'd like to welcome Mark Lucas, our Inspector Lucas is the, our detachment commander, and he's bringing you the Elgin OPP annual report. So go ahead, Mark. We appreciate it. I've had a chance to see this before, but the others haven't, so.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Mayor. I will try and share my screen now. Just please let me know when you're able to see the screen.
We can see the screen now.
So I would like to just to present our annual report for 2021. So this is basically just a quick overview of what's really gone on with our detachment. I've been fortunate enough to come to Elgin County detachment in July, and since July, we've had a very, been very busy since my arrival. Mayor Martin, you can see your comments there with respect to our conversations and your message to our members. And really, this is, although it's an external document that I share with all of the councils, councils, our detachment, the members really appreciate seeing the, this report and seeing the comments from the police services board. It does really resonate with them. This is just a short message from me, just introducing myself and just saying how hard our staff has worked over this last year, especially navigating the challenges of COVID-19, which has really had a tremendous impact, not only on our officers, but with our ability to really engage in our communities across Elgin County. Our organization, this is our flow chart of what our organization looks like for Elgin OPP. We are in the process of reviewing our service delivery model and getting the results from the service delivery model. In essence, what happened was there was a review of every detachment in the province and a staff review. And as a result, our detachment, for Elgin detachment, we are planning on seeing an increase in our officer complement, and we're hoping somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 officers, which would be fantastic for our communities. Our auxiliary unit has really not been overly active again during COVID. And you can see that even with the photo, all we had was a dated photo. We were, they were not, there wasn't much engagement this year. We didn't even have the opportunity to really get an updated photograph. So I'm hoping for 2022, at the end of this year, when you see my next report, we'll have some new photographs to show in there. Even, even having said that, the auxiliary members did manage to get 191 and a half patrol hours in. And our auxiliary members were instrumental during these freedom protests, and they were deployed with our officers across the province just to help backfill and provide assistance to our members. Our 2020 to 2022 action plans have really been focused in three areas: crime, traffic, and other. Crime, really, we were focused on preventing and investigating property crime and really engaged in intelligence-led policing and our crime abatement strategies to ensure that we're properly deploying resources at our peak calls for service and also in problem areas as identified through our regional operations analysts and through our own statistics gathering. Traffic, we maintain our year-round focus on traffic enforcement, really the big four causal factors, which include impaired driving, speeding, aggressive driving, inattentive, distracted driving, and failure to use seatbelts. In terms of other, we worked really hard on generating efficiencies within our detachment. The collision reporting center has been a resounding success and has really helped the free time for our members to remain available for frontline calls for service. Our mental crisis response team has been another great success that we've achieved at detachment. And we are working on getting a second member to ensure that we have coverage from 8:00 AM until midnight, Monday to Friday. We do have a comprehensive crime management plan at detachment, which is administered through our detective sergeant, Victoria Lux. And the crime unit includes four detectives, which are assigned to major case investigations, and three detectives assigned to the community street crimes unit. The CSU or Community Street Crimes Unit is responsible for investigating property crimes and drug investigations. And also in that, we have a domestic violence investigator who's also responsible and bundled into the community mobilization and engagement to help us with our domestic violence investigations. We are very fortunate in Elgin County to have a traffic management unit. And embedded in that unit, we have three members that are assigned to their entire focus is responding to focus patrol initiatives for trouble areas identified within Elgin County and high visibility proactive police work. And our, our traffic management unit has been very receptive to community concerns and have been deployed in accordance with any areas that we've identified as hotspots within Elgin County. We've, we've had a great deal of success with that. We're very fortunate in Elgin County to have a very strong, well-established network of community policing committees to represent the municipalities we serve. We do work in partnership with our committees to identify and resolve issues of crime and traffic concerns that are identified by the community. Additionally, our community members volunteer countless hours of their time to support many community initiatives, particularly those that assist children, the elderly, and vulnerable groups. We are actually working towards having a meeting in the near future and have discussion about creating one Central Elgin Community Policing Committee. Currently, though, we do have them in West Elgin, South Walt, Dutton, Dutchwich, Port Stanley, Belmont, Malahide, and Bayham. And we are very appreciative of all of the hard worker committees due to support the community and the OPP. This is our community model of engagement for community policing. That's, that hasn't changed. I'm sure you would have seen that in the past. We do follow the Ontario Community Mobilization and Engagement Model of Community Policing. And again, the focus is on prevention, early intervention, working collaboratively with our community partners, which we, which we know has built strong relationships and has the greatest impact and lasting solutions for crime reduction and preventing utilization. Constable Troy Carlson was previously, previously on the committee. He has been off for some time. And instead, provincial constable Norman Kelso has been the new representative. And he's done a fantastic job integrating himself into this role and making sure that our identified projects do remain a priority for Elgin County. In Elgin County, we do maintain a drug and alcohol strategy, and this was based on community concerns from the 2018 Elgin Situation Table. And that Situation Table did identify the need for our comprehensive drug and alcohol strategy within our community. The focus, really focused on the four missions or the four pillars with the mission statement to create, implement, and evaluate a comprehensive drug and alcohol strategy that meets the needs of our community based on the pillars of prevention, treatment, harm reduction, and justice. Our vision is a safe and healthy community in Elgin County without the negative impacts of drugs and alcohol. Again, this work group has worked very hard to continue to develop a community-based drug and alcohol strategy while navigating the challenges of the pandemic. We are very, very hopeful that 2022, we will see much less restrictions and allow far greater engagement. As I mentioned, provincial constable Kelso is our new community street, or community safety officer. He does also perform the role of media officer. He's had a great deal of success with really focusing on strengthening community connections with our stakeholders, schools, and our media partners. Special projects for us, really the ATV patrols and our marine patrols. For your awareness, we have submitted a business case to have two ATVs permanently assigned to the Elgin County OPP. The ones that we had on loan this year were part of a pilot project to show that there really is an identified need to have an increased presence on our trails. And with our marine unit, we're really focused on enhancing high visibility proactive marine patrols along our beach areas. With the amalgamation between the Elgin and Chatham detachment, we will have access to a second boat. So during the busy summer months, we'll have far greater visibility on our lake. Really to bolster our business case for the ATV patrols, there's been exponential growth in rural trail usage due to the establishment of the Talbot Trail ATV Club. Again, this, the TTAC has worked with several private property owners to establish over 100 kilometers of well-maintained ATV trails in Elgin County. As a result, our ATV patrols along our county trails are in response to community concerns, which has resulted in positive community feedback regarding the enhanced visibility enhancement along our county trails. This past year, for our marine unit, we've logged over 186 hours of patrol and we've had over 48 calls for service. Many of those have been missing person calls with a great deal of success, as well as distress, bores in distress, and complaints of liquor license offenses on the lake. Our Community Street Crimes Unit, or CSU, has had a very, very successful year during 2021. Our CSU investigated over 181 occurrences. They've executed 131 judicial warrants, charged 197 persons, and laid over 1,000 charges. This requires counties' hours of investigative expertise for members to maintain safety and security of our community. I've highlighted some of the bigger investigations that these, the CSU has been involved with, and they're very noteworthy occurrences. In January 2021, our CSU commenced an investigation into the theft, revinning, and the sale of dump or utility trailers in our county. The accused parties in this investigation stole trailers, altered bins, re-registered these with the MTO, and then sold them as licensed trailers. They were often registered to stolen identifications as well. As a result of a search warrant, multiple identifications were recovered, as well as a laptop linking the accused to the creation of fraudulent slips or sales receipts for the new trailers. And the recovered property had an estimated value of over $150,000. And this investigation culminated with five people arrested and charged in relation to this investigation. A notable drug weapon conviction investigation was in April 2021, again involving the Elgin City SCU. As a result of a Section 11 Control Drugs and Substances Act warrant, a residence was searched, again stemming from just a routine traffic stop, and a great deal of items were seized from methamphetamine. A growa lap was also, was also uncovered and many precursors to the production of methamphetamine, including fraudulent identification, $6,000 of US money, stolen credit cards, unregistered and prohibited firearms, including side-off shotgun, side-off rifle, ammunition, brass knuckles, just a wide gamut of things we don't want in our community. Again, you'll see that cocaine trafficking, another big one from our CSU. And the, here's some photos of just the Canadian, the amount of Canadian currency, drugs, weapons, firearms, and ammunition that were seized during these investigations. For our detachment stats, and I apologize, I'm going quick. Please let me know if I'm going too fast. You'll see that our trends for calls for service between 2016 until 2021 have been trending up. 2020 was the anomaly again during, due to COVID, where everyone was pretty much at home. But on a yearly basis, our calls are trending up. We've broken down our calls for service by zone, and I apologize that Central Elgin has the highest calls for service, but there's nothing I can do about that. Again, you'll see that Central Elgin does have the majority of calls. I touched briefly on our traffic management unit and just really focusing on some of the stats that our officers have generated. Our rationale is that by conducting static ride checks, by proactive policing, focusing on those four big causal factors, we're hoping to really impact our traffic statistics, reducing property injury collisions and our fatal motor vehicle collisions. There has been an increase in our fatal motor vehicle collisions from 2020 to 2021, and we have attributed to that to, again, the reopening of Ontario and more people using our, our county roads. We've had outside, our regional analysts look at our stats, look at our data to try to identify hotspots, to identify trends, or anything that we could do proactively to help limit the fatal collisions in our area. And there wasn't one causal factor to any of the reasons for the fatalities. Some of them occurred when the weather was beautiful during the summer. And again, close to Thanksgiving, we had a double fatal, and there's been just a, no significant one causal factor for collisions. You'll see that our collisions did peak in November with 125, and then towards December, again, they'll start trending back down. We're hoping now that we're entering into the spring and summer, we can really positively impact those stats and get those numbers down. I don't think it's any secret that we do suffer from animal or wildlife collisions in Elgin County. We're not immune to it. And if you look at our, the cruises in our parking lots, several of them are damaged again because of wildlife. These are just some of our statistics for crime prevention, again focusing on our Community Street Crimes Unit, intelligence-led policing analytics to really focus on the changes that we've tried to see and, again, in terms of creating a reduction to violent crime and property crime. Drug crime, I'm happy to say that has been trending down. Again, that's largely a part due to the excellent investigative work by our CSU. These are some of our crime stopper stats. And our financial reporting. As you know, there has been a reduction in our base service cost. And I'd like to say this because we've been so efficient in policing, but in fact, it's due to the fact that we are down over 1,000 officers, which has resulted in a lower cost per property of $172.07. You note that our calls for service by time of the day, day of the week, in order to mitigate overtime at our detachment, we do have staggered shifts. And as you know, that was part of the auditor dinner report for the Ontario Provincial Police, and we were already ahead of the curve by making sure that we had staggered start times to coincide with the greatest calls for service, again with the hopes of creating cost savings for the county. We did complete a record number of criminal records checks this year. Again, with everything reopening, everyone was busy getting their criminal records checks done, so our staff have been very busy at our detachment. We did receive a ride grant this year, and our members did participate and ensure that all of the ride grant funds were used exclusively during the festive ride season. And we had a very successful festive ride this year. And I'd just like to add, these are some of the photos of some of the community events that we participated in. I was very, very happy to be invited to attend the Port Burrell Public School Build a Boat Project, especially with, with the OPP really trying to focus on maintaining a presence in our schools. I was very happy to see that they reached out to us and asked us to attend and participate. And this is our AMCert worker, Nadine, and I think at some point, I think she will be conducting a presentation for you just to discuss what that AMCert program is all about. You'll see some detachment photos here for awards and recognition for our members that received excellent service awards for excellence for 20-plus years. Mike Butler, you'll remember that recognized that face for his, getting his retirement pins there. And just acknowledging some of the members. Is there any questions for you based on the report?
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone have any questions for Mark? Deputy Mayor Marks and then councillor Rowe, go ahead.
Not really a question, maybe a comment. You know, times are pretty turbulent and certainly most of us, and I know people in county council, we hear a lot of grumbling. It's just sort of normal right now. But one thing I will comment, I've heard nothing. People must be very happy with the policing because I hear from many people on many topics, but no one's complaining about policing. And, well, that wasn't always the case. So I'd say you guys are doing a good job. Keep it up and thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
Go ahead, councillor Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you very much for the report. All very interesting. I sit on the Port Stanley Community Policing Committee Group. The most full. Anyway, so they talk about a lot of issues in, in the area. I was just curious on page 19 if, and maybe not for right now, but are you able to break down that Central Elgin number of all offense levels by category at all to share with maybe the community policing group, just so that they get a sense of what the activity is? Because one of the biggest things that we always hear is the speeding, and I know you're well aware of that, but I was just curious if that was a large proportion of the 27,000.
And unfortunately, we can break it down. The, there's this report that I prepare as opposed to the report that I prepare for the police services board. I can, I can get more specifics to, to really identify the calls for service and tell you exactly what they were, but this would be all encompassing, all of the calls for service we had. That could be from traffic incidents to some of them as motor vehicle collisions or any type of suspicious person calls. They're all kind of lumped into that one big total number, but I do have the ability and I can look deeper into that to really break that down for you.
It's so large.
Yeah, that, that would be very appreci-, we'd appreciate it. I get to see it at meetings and how how Central Elgin is doing a very, what I'd say, unwell. But that would be great for both our policing, community policing groups. And I believe you're actually going to be meeting with them or something soon, but that would be great if you could break that down for them, Mark, so that they have an idea.
I can do that. I can do that.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Krebitz.
Well, thank you, Inspector Lucas. I was quite surprised when you mentioned about the ATV, why the increased presence is required for that. I don't see the Trail ATV Club being that much of an issue to have to increase the police presence for 100 kilometers of trail. It just seems, in my eyes, like a, I'm gonna say it, a waste of money. Making this program larger. I, I don't, I, I don't know what the problem is there or why the increase is required. It just seems like a lot of, something rather redundant at this time. I don't know if you can comment on that at all?
Sorry, I can speak to that. So I was aware upon my arrival that there were some concerns from West Elgin, particularly wanting a greater ATV presence on, on the trails. And even upon my arrival, the OPP really wants to make sure that we do have a presence on our roads, waterways, and trails. And with the Talbot Trail ATV Club, it's another opportunity for us to engage in proactive policing. And not, not necessarily in terms of enforcement where, where we're focusing on charging people, more so for the visibility and the safety aspect, to make sure that people know that we are out there and that we do expect them to behave responsibly on our trails in our county. And again, there may not have been that much information or data because we weren't out there. As we are, our officers are out there and deployed, now we'll generate stats to coincide with the patrol hours. And in terms of how that's utilized, we, we're not assigning members there at overtime. We're assigning members there during patrol hours, during peak times. And we're engaging outside resources as well. So I'll utilize the traffic management team from West Region, have those members deployed. Sometimes we use emergency response team members, have them deployed. So just another facet to make sure that we're maintaining visibility in all aspects that were mandated and required to do.
Do you know, I do know councillor Krebitz, when, when we went before the West Elgin Council and I was introducing Mark to them, they were very appreciative of having the, the all-terrain vehicles there because they'd been having some major problems out there.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the response. I just wanted to make sure it was for safety and not for looking for enforcement, but that's the answer. But thank you for that response.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mark. We very much appreciate you coming and presenting the information to us.
Thank you very much for having me. It was my honor to be here tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to correspondence requiring action, and we have three special event committee reports in this. Would you like to read the motion for the first one, please?
Please, Madam Mayor. Moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that special events permit report will be 2022 nights of Columbus Family Fishing Derby be received for information? And the council approved the special event permit for the 2022 nights of Columbus Family Fishing Derby scheduled for Saturday, May the 29th, 2022, from 7:00 AM until 11:30 AM in the Port Stanley Harbor, subject to the following conditions. The organizers complying with the special events permit policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance be provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $5 million, meaning the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. The final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services in compliance with all public health guidelines and restrictions as applicable.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not, I do see Karen has been joined us, so I will ask Diane to call the vote, please.
Councillor Rowe, yes. Councillor Krebitz.
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And the next, the Air Fest event?
The next motion, Madam Mayor. Moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Rowe, that the special events permit report, we, Air Fest 2022, will be received for information. And the council approved the special event permit for the Air Fest 2022, scheduled for Saturday, June the 24th, this Sunday, June the 26th, 2022, from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM on the St. Thomas Airport lands, subject to the following conditions. The organizers complying with the special events permit policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance be provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $10 million, meaning the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. The final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. The organizers be responsible for payment of standby fire services from Central Elgin Fire Rescue during the event, should it be requested. In compliance with all public health guidelines and restrictions as applicable.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please, Mrs. Wilson?
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Councillor Krebitz?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And the next one on the Slow Pitch League.
Please, Madam Mayor. Moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that the special events permit report will be 2022 Sampson Christian Slow Pitch League be received for information? And the council approved the special event permit for the 2022 Christian Slow Pitch League scheduled for Saturday, May the 14th, 2022, from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM at Don Campard, subject to the following conditions. The organizers complying with the special events permit policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance be provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $5 million, meaning the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. The final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. The organizers applying for an exemption for noise bylaw for the proposed ban, if necessary, in compliance with all public health guidelines and restrictions as applicable.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this one? Seeing none, would you call the vote, please?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett.
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. We're now into correspondence for information. Does anyone have any questions on any of the three items there? Council Row.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just on number one, the Ontario Energy Plan, the letter as it states says that Central Algon had a twenty seventeen resolution on on this topic. At some point, would we be able to actually see what that resolution? Was? Or do we need to know?
Oh, can you? Madam Mayor, we can circulate that to council. And add some context to the applicability of that under the current legislative regime.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that correspondence ratings number one through number three inclusive, be received as information and filed.
Would you call the boat?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett.
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now we're on to Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, the annual water reports for Belmont and Central Algon distribution systems. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Council Row.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. More of a comment, I guess. I did have a few questions early on that I asked. Staff about, very happy with the answers. And I did learn quite a bit about how Belmont works anyway. So I would just. I would just say to. The author of the document, I guess, just to fine tune it in a in a few small ways, but there's a ton of information in there and it's very, very helpful.
Yes, it really gives you a very detailed idea of exactly what they are doing, what they have to do, and that's good for us to know what's happening. Any other questions or comments? Now, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report I C S O five twenty two. Read annual water reports for the Belmont Water System, Central Algon Distribution System, we received this information. And the council received and approved the summary reports and annual reports for both the Belmont Water System and the Central Algon Distribution System for the year twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Would you call the boat, please?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett.
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now Director of Financial Services Treasurer, the Port Stanley Booster Pumping Station. Go ahead and read the motion, if you would, Mrs. Wilson, then we'll see if there's any questions.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that report DFS ten twenty two, we request for proposals. Twenty twenty two O two engineering services for the design of the Port Stanley Booster Pumping Station and associated works to be received, be received for information. And that council accepted proposal of W T Infrastructure Solutions, Inc. for the twenty twenty two O two engineering services. For the design of the Port Stanley Booster Pumping Station and associated works in the amount of one hundred ninety seven thousand two hundred seventy two dollars plus all applicable taxes.
Questions? Seeing none, would you call the boat?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett.
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the resolution concerning the tandem axle dump truck.
Motion means, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report DFS eleven twenty two, we supply and delivery of one tandem axle dump truck, be received as information. And that council approved the purchase of one tandem axle dump truck from Carrier Truck Center, Inc. in the amount of three hundred forty nine thousand four hundred and forty six dollars plus all applicable taxes.
Questions? No questions? Call the boat, please.
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett.
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we move on to Director of Fire Rescue. Or the Fire Chief, the monthly alarms activity report. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that report that. Two, we monthly alarm activities report, February of twenty twenty two, be received for information.
Does anyone have any questions? I was teasing them, Ray, and saying that maybe they should ask you a question just to prove that I was right this morning. Nobody has, oh, Colleen's gonna ask a question.
To be, thank you, Madam Mayor. To be honest, I actually had the comment written down before you said that, so.
Good.
Not doing this because it was mentioned. And I've read these every other meeting as they come on the agenda, but for this time around, for whatever reason, it just struck me that the average response time is. Between eight and ten minutes, which is incredible to me. So it's just more of a, that's an awesome job, so keep it up.
Thank you. Now, you you really did get off lightly, getting praise. Yes, that is great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, would you call the boat, Mrs. Wilson, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And now we're at the Director of Asset Management and Development Services. So the first one is the noise by law for the gun club?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report A M D S O three twenty two, reapplication for exemption to the noise by law. Number two hundred and twelve, as amended, be received as information. And that council grant an exemption to by law two hundred and twelve to allow the St. Thomas Gun Club to hold their spring and summer trap shooting events. Taking place on May the twenty second, July the seventeenth and September the fourth of twenty twenty two.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you call the boat?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook? Council Cook? Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're on to the next one, which is a noise by law amendment for the St. Thomas Dragway. Would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that report A M D S O four twenty two, reapplication for exemption to the noise by law. Number two hundred and twelve, as amended, we received this information. And that council grant an exemption to the by law number two hundred and twelve, meaning a by law to control noise in the municipality of Central Algon as amended. To allow the St. Thomas Dragway to host a concert as part of a weekend program taking place on May the twenty first, twenty twenty two, from seven PM to ten thirty PM.
Any questions? Seeing none, would you call the boat?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook? Council Cook? Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Somehow, Council Cook, this happened at the last meeting as well. She was fine at the beginning and then now it's it's, you know, it's lighting up like she's speaking, but we're not hearing anything. So. Just so you know that, Council Cook, I hope you can hear us. And now the monthly building and by law report. To read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report A M D S O six twenty two, read February twenty twenty two monthly building and by law report, be received as information.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I'm just just one question, just about the separating of the the large building at. The Kokomo subdivision. It's not separated in the report yet. Just wondering if that could be done.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Through you, Madam Mayor. If you look at the summary page, there's a note on January. Note one, and then a note at the bottom that says Kokomo Beach Apartment Complex, twenty four plan.
Okay, I apologize. Mine is not coming up. Sorry.
Yeah, mine won't come up tonight either. There's some reason I can't get that tonight.
I I did hear Council Crevett's at the last meeting and that's how we address that. Just to make make a note and. We anticipate another large value building permit coming in, so that'll be note two, and what the value of that, have to do the math, but. We'll give it a bit of an an indication of where we sit. For a year.
Thank you. Any other questions on the report? Seeing none, would you call the vote, please?
Council Row?
Yes.
Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook? Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And now the traffic and parking by law. Would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that report A M D S O seven twenty two, retraffic and parking by law be received as information. And the staff be directed to bring forward a traffic and parking by law for council consideration.
Any questions? Would you call the boat, please?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook? Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes. The Council Cook will just give her a minute because she's trying to come back in again.
Turn that.
Yeah, she's having fun connecting to the audio.
She just sent a, I got an email here saying that her computer froze. And was unable to, so she was gonna try to reconnect.
Yeah, it says she's trying to reconnect audio, but. I guess we, oh. Council Cook, did you get it connected? Doesn't sound like it. That's too bad, yeah. Okay, the next thing that we're looking at now are the bylaws. The first and second reading on the drain by law and the traffic parking by law. Any questions? If not, go ahead and read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that by laws twenty six nine seven, be read a first and a second time.
To call the boat, please?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Hey.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
And now the second one on the second by law.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that by law twenty six ninety seven be read a third time and finally passed.
Would you call the boat, please?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Marks?
Yes. Thank you. Now, we have public notice now of the waterfront master plan, so. It, this is now up on our Let's Talk Central Algon. The draft thing so that, yes, go ahead. Okay. And so this is just public notice for everyone so that they can now respond and let them know what they think of. The drafts and so it's moving ahead and we appreciate that and we encourage anyone to have a look at it. Let's talk central Algon to make. So they have their comments or say. And then notice a motion or motion, this is. Which Council Crevett's brought up at the last meeting and this is concerning the. Fire hall mural, fire door mural, sorry. And what we had originally proposed to do with it, and now that we know that the. Current purchasers or owners of the building are going to keep it as is, this basically just says that we will. Leave it, we will not act on it until something happens to the doors if it does, but that the motion is still, it's still there. But it's not going to, it's going to just not be acted upon unless it's needed. That, do we do, do we have a motion? Okay, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, whereas on October the twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Algon. Provide staff direction to place a print of the Port Stanley Fire Station Door mural on the visitor center. And whereas the municipality obtained a high resolution, for a high resolution digital picture of the Port Stanley Fire Station Door mural in advance. Of the sale of two eighteen Joseph Street. And whereas the new owners of two eighteen Joseph Street have indicated. They will retain the Port Stanley Fire Station Door mural. Now therefore, staff be directed to indefinitely defer any action. On placement of the Port Stanley Fire Station Door mural on the visitor center.
Thank you. Would you call the boat?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Does anyone have any other business to bring up tonight? Deputy Mayor Marks?
I was down Belmont the other night, Thursday or Friday, I can't remember, ordered a pizza. We're so busy now with all the new growth that I'd drive around for a bit, so. I noticed some of our construction sites, it must have been Friday night. And it just hit, there's a lot of mud on the roads and I thought for Friday night. And then then just by chance, I come home, I get on the weekend, I got a text from another lady in another place. Complaining of mud in the road. And obviously, right now, we're into mud season. And I I get, I'm pretty sure I've been told that the contractor, they're in charge of keeping it. And I understand that maybe. They can clean it all up and then all of a sudden a late delivery truck comes in and drops something off and he makes the mess. But I guess I'm just asking maybe if we can sort of pass it on down to our developers because we're really into the mud now. And I, you know, I'm not complaining, I understand it. We had so much construction, I heard it. From my in-law or my brother-in-law's down in Port and they finally got that construction over, but it's, we're getting it all over. Which I guess is a good thing, having all that development.
Is that, Mr. Brown, is that you?
Okay.
Look after that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other business? If not, would you like to read the by law, the confirmatory by law, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that by twenty six twenty five be read a first and a second time.
Call the boat?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Final one on that by law?
Motion on the by law, moved by Council Row, second by Deputy Mayor Marks, that by law twenty six ninety five be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the boat, please?
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. And the final motion?
Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Row, that the regular meeting of council is due Monday, March the twenty second, sorry, March the fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Be adjourned at seven forty eight AM and the next regular meeting of council will be scheduled for Monday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Call the boat, please.
Council Row, yes. Council Crevett?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
It isn't really light out, Diane, but we made it before eight o'clock.